Okay. Are we live?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Brazil Common Council. And we'd start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this wonderful, beautiful day, and thank you for the calorie-full of people today. I pray that the decisions we make and the things that we discuss would be pleasing to you. And I just, I pray for all of those who are going to be affected by our decisions and things, and I hope everything is a happy outcome. And we just give you praise and glory, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All righty. Next, we have roll call. Karen Bowes.
Present.
Shane Litz.
Present.
Stephen Bell.
Present.
Brad Deal.
Here.
And Angela Moniz.
Present.
Karen McQueen, our Cork Treasurer, along with Lou Britton, our City Attorney and myself, are present to see. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and that would be from September 10th of 2025. Is everybody able to get those in review? We have a motion by Karen to approve them.
I'll second.
Seconded by Angie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Outside of what's on the agenda, do we have any audience comments? If you're not on the agenda? If not, we'll move to old business, which there's nothing here under new business. Well, we've got several things here to address, first being the petition for a vacation of alley in Ringo's first addition.
I'm Eric Songile. I'm representing Mark Emrick in Flathead, Nebraska. They live at 907 East Mechanic. That's on the corner of Mechanic and Van Dalia Street. There is a 12-foot flathead alley that's undeveloped, and we're requesting that be vacated. The Emrecks would like to place a pool bar on their property. There are two adjoining neighbors that would be affected by this. Sarah Petrowski, she has filed a written consent. She approves it. Jason Ottersen has given me a verbal consent. I would appreciate if the council could approve the ordinance and suspend the rules and approve the first reading. In order to vacate, you're also required to publish a notice and ask for the guidance.
This would be ordinance 11.
So in this alley, they can just have it go one way and half of it go the other?
That's correct.
Yes.
Everything looks in order to me, so I'll make the motion that we suspend the rules and pass this on the first reading.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Angie to suspend the rules in order to pass this on the first reading. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
So now I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 11, 2025, vacating the Flathead Alley in Ringo's first addition.
Okay, we have a motion by Angie to approve the vacation of this alley, seconded by Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So we get the, just these two signed?
Thank you for coming, Steve. I'm just getting seated.
11. I apologize for not dressing very maorial, but it isn't working out to kind of bridge that. Let's start the kickoff. It's my 33rd year up there, so I don't like to get everything, because it'll start without me. It's the year.
Eric, do you want two copies of these? This is your copy. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. We appreciate it. Okay, moving along, our next item on the agenda is the approval of a public hearing for the 2026 budget, and that would open now at, I'm seeing, 12:08?
5:08.
5:08. Okay, 5:08. Long day. See if I've got any questions about 2026 budget. If not, we'll close the public hearing at 12:09. And then we have the approval of the 2026 budget. Now that would be the first reading, correct?
Yes, we're doing another first reading this time.
Move for approval of the 2026 budget on the first reading?
We have a motion to approve the 2026 budget, first reading. Seconded by Brad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now, Diane Miller, is she here? Okay. Caitlin O'Dell? This has to do one with the rabbit hutch, and the next one with the chicken coop. Caitlin O'Dell? Lisa Ward? Thank you, Lisa. We're one out of three so far. What can we do for you to see?
I've already got chickens. I live on Meridian, and I didn't know ahead of it, but for me, this June, I'm going to look, and I have a lot of chickens there. So that's just, I've got a door struck open.
Okay. So do we have an application?
Yeah.
Is everything compliant?
Thank you for coming, Lisa. I'll move for approval of the application for the chicken coop.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded by Karen.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, we have trick or treat dates and times. Who are we on?
We discussed at the last meeting to possibly just go with one night on the trick or treating, but I think in our workshop or whatever, we also discussed it a little bit further and to just go ahead and go with the same times and dates as what we went with in the previous years, which I think is 5 to 8 on the 30th and the 31st. Does everyone want to go with that?
Well, they do the thing in the city here, they choose to go elsewhere.
Exactly, yes. I think that's what the decision is.
Okay, so two nights, 30th and 31st, and that would be?
Five to eight.
Five to eight.
Five to eight.
So we did just make a motion to approve those dates and times?
So moved.
We have a motion by Shane to approve the dates and times discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now, Diane Miller, is she here? Okay. Caitlin O'Dell? This has to do one with the rabbit hutch, and the next one with the chicken coop. Caitlin O'Dell? Lisa Ward? Thank you, Lisa. We're one out of three so far. What can we do for you to see?
I've already got chickens. I live on Meridian, and I didn't know ahead of it, but for me, this June, I'm going to look, and I have a lot of chickens there. So that's just, I've got a door struck open.
Okay. So do we have an application?
Yeah.
Is everything compliant?
Thank you for coming, Lisa. I'll move for approval of the application for the chicken coop.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded by Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, we have trick or treat dates and times. Who are we on?
We discussed at the last meeting to possibly just go with one night on the trick or treating, but I think in our workshop or whatever, we also discussed it a little bit further and to just go ahead and go with the same times and dates as what we went with in the previous years, which I think is 5 to 8 on the 30th and the 31st. Does everyone want to go with that?
Well, they do the thing in the city here, they choose to go elsewhere.
Exactly, yes. I think that's what the decision is.
Okay, so two nights, 30th and 31st, and that would be?
Five to eight.
Five to eight. Is that all right? So we did just make a motion to approve those dates and times?
So moved.
We have a motion by Shane to approve the dates and times discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now, Eric Day. Thank you for coming, Eric. Do you want to step up?
Here.
Yeah, well, I'm here.
Okay.
And you're here with concerns on the ordinance on firearms, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That is, just to be specific, 130 points goes on pain. It speaks, declared unlawful for any person to fire any gun or pistol in this city. Where the opinion talks about law enforcement, I'm not concerned about that. The issue that's at hand is on September 11th, I live on South Walnut Street. My neighbor had shot and killed my other neighbor's pet cat. This was a nice cat. It wasn't climbed into half people or anything like that. It was loved in the whole neighborhood. After he shot the cat, I called the police. The police showed up, and they told me there's nothing they can do because he used a pellet gun. Now, in the ordinance, it says any gun, it doesn't specify. I did look up other city ordinances that do specify where BB guns, spring guns, or similar devices, and pellet guns are all on limits. I have papers if you guys want to help get that and want to look at something as a future idea. The issue I have is that the police told me there was nothing they could do, and there wasn't ordinance against this, and I feel like there needs to be something done. I don't want a guy shooting pellets or guns of any kind in my neighborhood. We've got kids around everywhere, we've got other animals in the neighborhood, and honestly, I don't want to deal with that whatsoever. He has since, I assume, he called the city on pain about my vehicles, and I even talked to the mayor about this, saying that he would probably do so, and this man came over to tell me I had to move on my vehicles, so that's what I did last Sunday, it's been taken care of. I just don't like the fact that I feel like I'm being treated as the bad guy when all I did was call the police, and nothing's been resolved. They did nothing to the guy, they just let him on the hook, and I think something needs to be done as far as the future for an ordinance that specifies the use of pellet guns, getting the police on board so that they will file charges or fines in that situation and update the cost, because this rule was written in, I believe, 1931.
True, it is.
Yeah, and so like the fine is like $10 or something like that, so just looking for all that to be updated and, you know.
Well, I think there's a couple reasons the police responded the way they did. It's always been kind of common, and I'm not saying it's correct, that a pellet BB gun is not listed the same as a firearm, because you can get one 12 years old, and it wasn't made. And secondly, I think another way we can address it is to do this exactly the way we're saying, specify those, you know, in an ordinance. That ordinance obviously needs updated, and when it's a $10 fine, the court system will need to mess up, to be honest with you. In most cases, they don't want $10 fines or $25 fines, they don't want to put back lock in, so that's part of the reason I think the response was the way it was. But I will say these pellet guns have got a lot more sophisticated than what they used to be. I mean, they've got pellet guns that shoot like a 200. You can hunt with them.
I don't understand. It's okay to kill an animal in town if you're using a certain kind of gun?
No, it's not okay to kill any animal in town or anyplace else, you know, regardless of what you're using.
Right, so I don't understand why the police didn't do anything because he had the right by gun?
No, it wasn't about, I think, and I don't, I don't want you to take this wrong, but when you, you say everybody in that neighborhood loved this cat, apparently one guy did. You know, now, I think you are allowed certain measures. I don't know what they all are, if that, if that animal was causing property damage or things like that, or, which cats, not typically, or a vicious dog, or, and cats have the ability to do that. I mean, I'd say this from personal experience, our neighbors got cats, and I'm okay with it, until they come up and they're spraying on my bushes in my front door, and smells like the scum. That is irritating. Or if I'm out there in my flower bed, and they're using it as their, their, their prize.
Cat pugs.
Cats are a different thing to deal with, it always seems like, you know. I do believe in that little saying, you never own a cat, they don't use. So it can be destructive. Whether that was going on, I don't know. I will say, you know, we've, we've tracked them, you know, you can always track them and do things like that. It's not necessary to kill them. Yeah, there, you know, and there's different things you can use, mothballs and retardants, you know. It's an unfortunate situation. I think the first thing we, I agree with you, we need to deal with, we need to change this ordinance. I mean, it's putting effect in the 30s, so it certainly needs to update, and I don't want to speak for the council, but I feel like we'll get on board with that, and let's get some bite into it.
I just want something to be done in the future, so that way it is taken more seriously and not just.
Well, I'd say that the firepower of these pellet guns is dramatically different than in the 30s, so, you know, a bad shot could injure somebody or that sort of thing, so we want to correct it. I mean, I hate that this circumstance happened in order to make a correction, but we can change it moving forward. We can't change what happened in the past. Well, let's put it this way, yes, I think there is, if my granddaughter's out playing in the yard and a dog attacks it, do I have a right to kill that dog?
You don't. I have someone that was shooting, got him in charges for shooting a dog that was attacking his cat.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you, you, there's a lot more to this, when, you know, there's a lot of circumstances that can be.
The question is how was it handled, and how much pressure was it?
Not that I know of. Apparently it was, I don't know, I don't know the guy that killed the cat. I don't know what certain, what reasoning he would have to do that. He's not here. Apparently we say, hey, the cat was giving us problems or something, so I think that debate is too late in the game, but I think, like I say, we can certainly change things moving forward, so this situation don't happen again. And that's, I feel like that's most proactive thing we can do. I appreciate you bringing up to our attention, but I mean, I'm sure this is not the first time this problem has happened in the city.
Yeah, I've certainly read on chatter of stuff happening in the past years and stuff, but first time I've been involved.
We have kids who just leave the animals, and now dogs, I'm sure dogs will come up and cats will come up, and they'll be like, oh, that's disgusting.
Well, you see it on TV every day, animal cruelty is a big topic, and it happens all across just nations.
That's why I'm here. I don't know, when you'd be here, I didn't know the cat, but I'm here for justice for animals, and a lot of it should be done.
Well, I agree. Well, you hope so.
We do have numerous animal farms.
Right, right. Somebody's were harmed in a fort to try to catch, you know, we do try to check out stray animals, but we have had, I mean, I'm directly involved in one, where there's three or four dogs that drug a girl down on the sidewalk, she ended up in a murder. And, you know, we've quarantined those animals, and we, by law, have to give them all back to them. Guess what? We have to give them. So I think when we deal with animals, I'm a dog guy, I work, I got a little bit, but we got to remember, it's not an animal problem, it's a people problem.
Right.
You know, so that's who we've got to deal with, and that's who we've got to target for the legal laws.
Okay, so the cat is now, we have these cats that are supposed to be noise, you know, say, they can go after anybody like that.
Well, that's a responsible question, but not everybody's that way, unfortunately, you know.
There's a lot of feral cats that live in town.
There is.
And there should be something else.
You make children got a program, they try to live trap them as soon as they can. They have a newer court, Spaden, and then they turn them back loose, but at least they can reproduce.
I do know, I live in Alabama City Women's, and I do it with my own.
But they do have a program that they've been doing now for, I don't know, it's last two or three years. I know that may be a long-term way of trying to solve that issue, but it's a step in the right direction, for sure.
There's some things we need to address, you know, to get the animals to be, to get this going.
Well, there are, there are things such as leash laws and things like that, you know, and do address animal care and responsibility, but I've been, directly been to people's houses before standing there on a fort, and there's six or eight cats running around, and they'll look right at you and say, they're not mine.
Yeah, that's true.
But you're feeding, and if I'm not mistaken, there is some law books statewide, and if you feed it so many days, it is your.
Three days.
Three days. But we run into that a lot, it seems to be more so with felines. We've all, but, you know, and you're coming here this evening, it's a step in the right direction. We really appreciate you coming in and raising your concern about this. We'll listen. Like I say, we'll get the proactive on this little situation.
Why, one of the things for higher fines and this.
Sure, that, that would all be part of it. A $10 fine, that's.
Yeah, that's like, so my goal is that way, at least if they are, you know, it's one they can, we'd have trapped it, the cat would still be alive, even if he took it somewhere, the cat would still be alive. The fact that he shot it and killed it, that's where my problem is, and if there's not something that's worse than that, then, you know, what are we going with?
We're going to change the future.
Yeah.
And we've got the ability to do that.
You need to realize that the fine would be on the cat owner as well for the cat running loose, because there's laws against that, so. I'm sorry, you should, but you don't need to be responsible. Right, they should.
Well, I pretty much say it's more of a people problem.
But we're just talking about the gentleman that killed the cat, but I just wanted to make sure you realize it's the owners as well that'll be penalized, and that's fine, that's what needs to happen.
Also, I mean, had he not shot the cat, that pellet would have went somewhere, if he missed, it could have went through a house, could have hit a kid.
That is right.
That's, that's. And he specifically told another neighbor that he got a high-powered pellet rifle
purposely for killing eagles, because his goal was to kill groundhogs, and he chose to use it on a cat as well, so.
They're, they're all awesome.
But that, I mean, he even said that he would shoot cats with it, and we have other cats in the neighborhood with, with those like wounds, so it's not like it's his first cat, it's going to be wrong.
It's sad.
You know, you mentioned groundhog, we're getting a real problem with them too. They're extremely hard to live trap. That's a tough one to deal with. But yes, we're trying to.
We can't get them out of the trap.
Yeah, there's some things you do, they're just tough to, they're tougher to get in, and sometimes it's size-wise, you know, they're pretty healthy.
They're pretty cute, though.
I have, I have more than 12 houses, and I've got four of them. Yeah, they're, they're picky.
Can I ask, you said you'd looked into some ordinances around in other communities, and I was, and you mentioned air rifles and pellet guns, would, did any of them regulate paintball guns?
The one that I found did not specify paintball guns, it just says pellet guns, BB guns, spring guns were similar devices within city limits, so.
Similar devices?
I think they're CO2. They're, they're, they're some type, the airsoft guns could be spring loaded, but I mean, that, obviously, you guys would have to come up with something that would fit this city and what you want to push through. I don't know if you guys want paintball guns to be shot around and or left off of this, that's, that's another discussion probably.
Because they're run on CO2, I'm concerned.
Yeah. But, yeah, who knows what will be in the future.
So our gun, our gun's will also.
I see issues.
Yeah, CO2 models.
Anybody else like a copy? Just a simple.
Lou.
Well, Eric.
And I can make copies too, Eric.
Again, thank you for coming in, and we'll certainly address this, and I want to thank everybody that came in to support this, because we need to, we'll make.
Got this one. Okay, thanks.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is kind of a segue into this next one. Animal control ordinance.
I have two kids that wanted to get a space for it.
Oh.
I've got five, I've got several, they don't want, they don't want some, some. That's for waking up cats.
The animal control ordinance, I think.
I circulated a revised, possible revisions to the ordinance. Janet had asked to make some changes to the ordinance, started off with just making sure I got the new inspection office properly designated, but that, I think, led her into looking at some other areas that we, that she had suggested some changes in, and those, the thing I sent around is largely the changes she wanted. I did include a section, grandfathering, because.
So, are those, those guns are that one also? Yes.
And Lou. Oh, yeah.
Well, Eric.
And I can make copies, too, Eric.
Again, thank you for coming in, and we'll certainly address this, and I want that everybody can support this, because we need to, we're making room.
Got this one. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is kind of a segue into this next one. Animal control ordinance.
That's for waking up cats.
The animal control ordinance, um, I think.
I, I circulated, you know, the revised, possible revisions to the ordinance. Janet had asked to make some changes to the ordinance, started off with just making sure I got the new inspection office properly designated. But that, I think, led her into looking at some other areas that we, that she had suggested some changes in, and, uh, those, the thing I sent around is largely the changes she wanted. I, I did include a section, uh, grandfathering, because, you know, if we just, we can't just all of a sudden say, all right, you've been doing this for 20 years, you can't do it anymore, you need to give them some grandfather provisions. So, I did put some grandfather provisions in. But, uh, I did not prepare ordinance for adoption, because I thought everybody might want to, might want to look at it a little bit, come up with some ideas, and if you want to get together and talk about it, or how you want to handle it, just make suggestions to me, and I can put those in another draft and circulate it, however you want to handle it and stuff. But, we wanted to at least get it started.
Yeah, I, I think this is totally different than what we were discussing the other ordinance before the fire on. So, we got, so this is kind of a different animal here, as far as, um, and there again, a lot of these ordinance were from many years ago, and they need updated, and this being one of them, I'm sure. But, yeah, Lou, that gives everybody a lot to look over here and see if they want to make changes, additions, subtractions, and things like that. It does, um, there's some things in here about ownership. You know, technically, we, we've done tags here at the city, but, you know, I don't know what it was, two or three, four dollars.
We were the only ones. Yeah, five dollars.
Same things in the county, but nobody does it, you know, they're supposed to register their animal. It's been that way for years in the county a little bit. You're not going to get people coming up there doing, I think, two or three, four dollars, and that's the, um, I can remember them used to come around in session, like, your animals. So, anyhow, this is for information to look at and see which way to go with. Like, I'm, I'm pretty confident it's outdated also. So, that gives us something to work on.
Especially you.
Didn't lose this agenda, Lou, I just forgot where to put it. Okay, next item on the, for discussion, the city pool. Been a lot of discussion on that pool, I'm, um, it's getting pretty expensive to operate, and how long do you want to do that? Um, it, uh, we can cripple along with it, but it's getting to be pretty expensive to do it. Now, the Y does run the pool, and, uh, resupply all chemicals, materials, everything else. It's never been a big moneymaker, but it never was designed to do that. It's normally designed as something that you can add to. But it got to the point with the city that really until the Y got involved with some part of the feeder system, with their programs and stuff, there was nobody really using it. I'd go up there, two o'clock, I'd go, nobody's there. And another issue with it is such a short season, it's eight weeks out of the year that pool is open. Whereas when you get in and do these splash pads and stuff, you know, basically, they can be open from, um, Memorial Day to Laker Day, and you don't need lock guards and things like that. So, there's been some discussion about, um, not funding the pool, maybe increasing the water park over there and the splash pad, and things like that, but, um, like I say, it just seems like you've done a lot of money down, kind of down the drain. It's outlived the purpose, about 20 years, you know, that pool's been there a long time. There's some ideas, I'm not saying that right now we're going to, um, I think Angie brought up, you know, that it could be fundraising may be done to try to, um, do a new pool. But, you know, if we went to replace it, put a new pool in, it took a couple million dollars, and that's hard to come up with.
And it is costing us around 40 grand per year, 40,000, just to, just to maintain.
It's coming up, and we know it's going to have to be done, so.
I think they said around two, Mark wanted me to say around 200,000 for just the slide.
Just the slide being replaced, that's, that's over 200,000 dollars. That stuff's so expensive, it's unreal.
And a new splash pad would be a lot more.
Well, it's not we're wanting to do away with current activities and things, but we want to improve on it. So, the pool, you know, I'm not so sure it would be prudent financially to abandon it, and, you know, we'd have to estimate it, but at the same time, increase the splash pad. And, uh, you know, we've, they've talked about, they've talked for a lot on some better restroom facilities over there for concentration. They could use that building, the pool, it'd be a good setup to do rehab, next nice concentration, and a lot more accessible and things like that. So, that's something that's being discussed and being looked at pretty hard. You guys want to speak out on this?
I could, but these people sitting out there, this would be an opportunity for some of them, if they've got an opinion of what we're talking about with this splash pad idea. I don't know if anybody's ever been down to what's called Jellystone Park down between Bloomington and Bedford, but they've got a huge splash pad there that's just, you know, the water's about yay deep, the deepest parts around and stuff, but it's a really nice setup with those, you know, all ages go out there and have a good time with it. And it's a lot more cost-efficient, and yet it's still something good for, you know, the kids and.
You can still do a kiddie pool type situation and not have lock guards, but it can be, you know, it's got to be pretty shallow.
Yeah.
But, and also, we need to look at putting a recirculating system for the water over there. All that water being used is just lost water. Because if you put a recirculating system on that water, there again, that's 100,000. Now, the one we got is plumbed for, so, and the pump size will handle it. The pump size that's around that park would handle, I was told, would handle expansion also, so. They're not cheap, put them in, Janet, I know you see them involved in that a lot, but, uh, they went over great, the kids seem to know a lot of, you know. So, that's something we're, we're going to.
What are some of the other things that you use that around?
Oh, yeah, I mean, um.
Other than splash pad?
Yeah, but I think if, like I say, we abandon that, let's increase something else, you know, so, we want to keep them. But recreations are a very important thing about our community, it's something we look at a lot, you know. And we've got great parks, we really do, for, for our size, but we want to keep them up, we want to improve them, you know. So, that's what we're trying to do. But everything's, you know, it still comes down to money, so, we'll do what we can there. Any more discuss, any discussion on the pool guys?
If you've got summed it up, we're looking at over half a million dollars between the slide replacement and then an apron replacement.
Yeah, they've been doing that with, uh, that concrete apron, yeah, that's another part of the new needs adjusted, so. Things just got very expensive there.
The pump system, and then there was a heating and cooling element that the state is coming down with that they have to do now, too, according to Mark.
Stephen, you tell me that pool was put in, but it's back in, it was done, it was donations, a bank donation, yeah?
Yeah.
It's hard to do, it was two million bucks.
Right.
You know, those are numbers.
Seems like we were talking 90 or 95,000 back in.
Yeah.
Kind of easy.
Yeah, it's been a, a good while, over 30 years, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to council problems. Have I got anything we want to bring up at this point?
Um, we skipped over those folks that weren't here. What do we need to do with those?
I don't, my suggestion, I don't know if our animal control officer dealt with this.
I believe he has.
If he finds them to be compliant, I don't, I don't have a big issue with it. I think there's one or two that'll have trouble getting here.
One was a cat, right?
Yeah, well.
Diane?
No.
Diane Miller?
Yes, yes, correct. One was a rabbit hutch, that was Diane Miller, and that was Caitlin O'Dell.
And I think both of those two had a heart of pity here, because I think Diane Miller watches the kids, but very, a lot of kids in the game with her.
Yeah, I know, I've been over there and looked at that one, because that's right there in my backyard, basically, and, uh, talked to a lot of the folks around there at the side of the petition, and some of them have chickens, so.
So, I don't know, Steve, I know we like to have them come up here, but on the other hand, if they're, it's just like the ones that were approved tonight, they were found compliant, they had all the ducks in a row.
Chickens, chickens in a row.
You know, Steve, I, you know.
Killed chickens before they were hatched.
If you'd like to, we can approve those based on the fact that our animal control officers inspected it and found it to be compliant.
Well, I'll make a motion then to go ahead and approve both of those requests.
All three?
Um, what is it? Well, it's just two of them, yeah.
Oh, not the rabbit?
Or the rabbit and the chicken.
Chicken, there's.
One rabbit and one chicken.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, we don't, I mean, that's the way it's always been done. It's up to council, I, I mean. Personally, I don't think they should have to come up here, if, you know, because the permitting's all done in her office for most everything. And if, and due to, and I only say that due to the fact we do have an animal control officer. And once he's inspected, you know, it's found to be compliant, all, everything's in order. You know, the issue permit, just like a building permit or anything else, you know. But, that's just part of my thoughts on it. I mean, it saves staffs, because we've got, we've got chicken coop things, it's three months old. You know, part of, we don't, we don't meet several times a month or anything, when something gets delayed, you want to look at something, actually, it's two months, then it can turn into three, and something can be, you know, something like this. I wouldn't say that if we did, did not have an animal control, I wouldn't say that.
Mayor, so you would want him to go out and inspect the, the chicken coops and then bring it back to council?
If he's spoken to Dick, I mean, you know, he had, he had inspected, all the application was correct, everything was done that needed to be done to make it compliant and pass it.
And then does it still have to come to council?
It's up to council. I, I think it's permitting no different than a lot of permitting.
So, just.
You know, it falls under the code enforcement, jump cards and grass and issue, and he's got the ability to issue tickets.
Okay. So, you'd say just go to jail.
It's just part of the permitting process, which handled in that office, so. But, I mean, it's up to guys, if you feel like you want to come up here, so be it, yeah.
I had to second my motion.
I'm sorry, Brad, I, there was a motion to approve the two that were, not here to see. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second? Any further discussion?
I think one thing about a lot of this, just like the issue these folks talked about with the, the guy killing the cat and everything, we do need to get on top of our ordinances a little bit more, but there again, too, with all the other things going on, it's hard to, at times, to address each and every one of these. But I know since I've been on council, there's been many times where we've taken a $10.00 fine or a $25.00.00 fine and upped it to 100, 200, 500, just to try to get a little more teeth with it. And I think some of the issues you guys had, I don't know if you've talked to the main society about this issue, too, but, um, that would be one suggestion I would take on that, but, but along with, huh?
Roll through. The humane society.
Well, I'm talking about like, with animal, because that's like animal cruelty right there. So, whether the humane society would have anything they could say or do about, I don't know. But that, that was my, my point to them. But on these things, I know what we've talked about is the fact that we have so many people that's going ahead and having chicken coops, and, and I'll just say that because we don't know what else there's going to be, but they always do it, and we don't find out about it, just like Benny, you found out, till months, years, or whatever afterwards. And then they want to come in and say, oh, now that we know, let's do this. Well, um, I, I would think if you're doing something like that in the city, you'd at least investigate it a little bit and see what, what the laws are, what, what states for you to do, and most people don't. It's, it's like, I think was said up here earlier, it's like that sometimes they feel like it's better to ask forgiveness than it is permission. And, uh, that makes it a little rough, and that, that's why I think that the situation's been where you're almost, you're hesitant to give them permission to do that whenever they went, uh, out there and, again, ask permission, or ask forgiveness later.
Well, I think you have a motion on the floor with a second.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Anyone else? If not, a couple things on that, I think in a couple of weeks, the Colony Acres project should start, uh, actually moving along there. Uh, they got, about all the solar panels are down, down there, so that'll be done, it's going to be done for the first year, but their, their town chain is going to allow that, so.
Yes.
These projects have been, worked on for a long time, are becoming a reality. Like I said, we just had a construction meeting on the Colony Acres project, and it's going to move forward. Obviously, the main water line project that we're doing, it's moving forward also. We should be starting on that for the year down there, so. Like I say, these things have been a long time in the works, and, but they're, they're going to be a reality here for a long time, so that's good to see. Going to help the city a lot. Other than that, I.
The 29th.
29th.
Yep, because everybody's going to be going on 29th, and then we're done with that.
Yeah, there's a conference, yeah. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks everyone for coming, we really appreciate it, see you soon.
Try to get some signatures right now.
Yeah, Karen, I have a favor for you, and anybody else that would want to do this. But, for that bond that we're going to do.